So two, we will call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, February twelfth to order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. Council, we do have a amendment to the agenda tonight. The amendment would be adding item six I to the consent agenda. I would look for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to add agenda item six I.
We have a motion to approve the amended agenda with item six I. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, no special presentations tonight and no one signed up for open forum, public comment. Onto approval of city council minutes, we have the January twenty-second regular council meeting. I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That carries. We have consent agendas, items, uh, A through I. I'll take a motion to approve all of them, or we can pull some.
I'll make a motion to approve A through I.
We have a motion to approve items A through I. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is the vacation of Leander Avenue.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Before you, for approval this evening is a request to vacate a portion of Leander Avenue as, which is located on the O two B childcare plat, which we approved um, in late twenty twenty-three. Rob, um, if you go to the next slide, um, it'll show the actual vacation area. Thank you. Um, the applicant submitted this vacation to be able to show the document number for the right-of-way vacation on the plat before recording the plat, which they plan to do in March, so in a month or so, as well as close on the property. The portion that's to be vacated, um, is not intended to be improved, um, or needed for roadway purposes as originally dedicated by Leesock Township. Since this was completed, the township turned over the vacation area to the city in twenty sixteen. Also, that roadway is no longer, um, planned to be constructed as previously dedicated. And furthermore, Stearns County, when they did their plat review for the O two B childcare plat, they said they would not allow access as dedicated on the County Road one twenty that you see there. The access to the property, um, for the development purposes is not affected by this vacation either. Um, so there'll be two accesses, um, onto what is currently Leander Avenue, um, and no access onto County Road one twenty. This was reviewed and approved by Planning Commission on February fifth of twenty twenty-four, and the only comment that Planning Commission had was regarding the access to the property, uh, for development purposes, which, like I mentioned, is not going to be affected by this vacation. Any questions that you may have, I'll be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions before we open up the public hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the vacation request? Please step to the podium. Second call, anyone wishing to testify? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the vacation along Leander Avenue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any questions, follow-up for staff? Or discussion?
Just one question, Carrie. Where are the proposed access points off of Leander?
As you can see there, there's, um, a dotted line with a easement over it on the south part of the proper, on the lower part of this picture here. So they'll have one, two entrances, one to the far, for this north where the cursor is, which they're getting an easement from that current property owner, and then another access onto, or onto Leander. So there'll be two off of Leander for the purposes of this property. One is for emergency purposes only. Only, sorry.
If I'm not mistaken, that, uh, south, well, it would actually be the northeast corner there, bottom right of your map. That's already stubbed in, right?
Correct, yes. Um, and they are working on getting that easement from that property owner right now, and they'll record it with the plat.
Great, thanks.
Council not seeing any other questions, um, we will look for a motion on the vacation of the easement. We have a motion to approve the vacation of easement. Is there a second?
Mayor Fitzsim, if I could just intercede here, um, it's a vacation of right-of-way, just for clarification purposes.
The motion is to vacate the right-of-way along Leander. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Good clarification. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto old business, we have Pine Ridge Golf Course Development Agreement.
All right, Mayor and members of the council, you'll have to bear with me. I am recovering from a cold, so if you see water and cough drops, it's so that you can understand me the rest of the evening. Um, Mayor and members of the council presented for your review tonight are the final stages of the Pine Ridge Golf Course sale, encompassing various documents, including amendments, and a few newly introduced materials pertinent to the transaction. I've prepared a presentation for each document, and I'm open to addressing questions either as we proceed, proceed through each, um, slide for each document, or as a whole at the end, considering that they are, some of them are interconnected in nature and have potential effects on one another. These revisions mark a significant and final step forward in the sale of Pine Ridge Golf Course. We look forward to further collaboration with the buyer to ensure a successful and mutually beneficial closing, as well as responsible adherence to the development agreement and deed restrictions for the ensuing three decades. As your staff, we recognize that this decision has been passionately deliberated and has varying perspectives. We've appreciated the collaborative approach and commitment to supporting a local business, honoring the decision of the majority, considering the broad interest of the community, and agreeing to acknowledge the best of intentions in the future of Sartell, even though sometimes it may represent a different approach or desire than our own selves individually. We recognize that this has been equally difficult for our council to work through, and we truly commend the city council for navigating through those challenges and steering our community with dedication to our new policy governance systems. The true success of a community is measured in its willingness to come together to overcome adversity and provide compassion towards each other while doing so. We hope you'll join us here and lead us in advancing Sartell with the respect, kindness, and nudity, as we've watched you do. So with that, we'll proceed with the presentation and review, and then ask any questions, stop me as I go through it, or raise any concerns as they arise, or we can do it all as a whole. I'll kind of take your guys' lead on that. So, that screen's not working, we'll go this way. See if the clicker works. Okay. So I thought I would start just to walk through the full process. I'm not going to go through each one of these, because I know we've talked about this in depth, but this has been a process that started in September of twenty twenty-two. It's actually gone through the course of two, um, councils, and we've had a change of council during that time. Um, proposed to wrap up tomorrow, February thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. And so the last time that we really talked about this or discussed this was in early September. Um, that was to review the purchase agreement, which was an amended purchase agreement from the initial approved purchase agreement in May. And then all parties did execute and sign that, uh, on October sixteenth. That was official. And so that's really been the last that we've talked about this. At that time, we knew that the final pieces of the development agreement would come back. And so, development agreements historically are items that we do either right before we're going to record documents or right before we're going to close on our property. And so that's why it's coming back to you tonight amongst other documents. So I'm going to go through each one of them. Like I said, feel free to cut me off if you have questions as we go through them. So the first item is the purchase agreement. As I mentioned, it was officially executed October sixteenth after council approval in September. This is the first formal amendment to the purchase agreement since, um, you'll notice the title of the document in your council packets, it's referred to as the first amendment of the purchase agreement, since technically, the purchase agreement was not executed until October. So the items that were changed on the purchase agreement are the adjusted closing date. We were initially proposed to close by January twenty-fourth. Obviously, we haven't closed yet. Um, so adjusting that date, and then giving ourselves a little bit of a grace period too, so I think, uh, it's until March twelfth. And so, it's scheduled for closing tomorrow, but you would have until March twelfth, which technically we do have two more meetings between now and then. Um, we changed from meets and bounds to, uh, the new proper legal description. So that's a change in the purchase agreement. You'll notice that throughout all of the documents. And then we updated the construction start date from October of this year, twenty twenty-four, to starting no later than June first of twenty twenty-five, and then adjusted the completion dates accordingly. This is to accommodate, uh, in the event that the current tenants would like to operate without any construction taking place throughout twenty twenty-four. While preparing for the sale, it also became apparent that we needed, um, proper public drainage and utility easements that were not historically in place, because we own the property. Um, and so the city recorded those easements, and the amendment reflects that. So these are the four key changes in that first formal amendment to the purchase agreement. Keep moving.
I guess I have one question on the dates. Understand some recent developments that you've shared with us that that, um, the new, new buyer and operator, uh, likely wouldn't have a cancellation until... Sorry, trying to think through this chronologically. So, we would close tomorrow. At that point, the new owner has the opportunity to cancel the lease, which is a twelve-month notification process, which goes into effect, um, would cancel, you know, February thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, right?
Mm-hmm, except for that we're the ones giving the notice and not the new buyer. So we, one of the items in May was that the council wanted to give the notice of termination at or before closing. And so that's us giving it, and then the termination fee as well. And so, we will give notice of termination, that will start that one-year clock. But otherwise, every other item of the assignment of that lease goes to the new buyer, once they take over ownership.
Okay. Couple items there. One, one we'll come back to is that, um, notification. I thought we were very explicit in saying the following day from closing, which actually rendered it that the city wouldn't be canceling, the new owner would be canceling, because council, if I recall, we had a lot of discussion that we didn't want to cancel something, and then if the, if the sale didn't go through, we no longer have an operator on the golf, but we'll come back to that one.
Yep.
Um, I guess I'm, just to dive into it, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the dates, and there's likely a reason here, but October, uh, if, if all of this goes through, tomorrow we close. February twenty twenty-five is when the new owner can operate or do as they wish. Um, why do we need to move the dates beyond October of twenty twenty-five? Because within the lease, the owner has full right outside of season to do anything they want on the property, which I think is what originally drove this, right? Like, we were... They were going to start reconstruction while someone was still operating it, but the lease gives them the right to enter and do as they wish outside of golf season. And so, I, I struggle with why we push it back beyond a full year. I actually think we could leave it as it is. But, sorry.
No, I, I, I mean, the, I think that that's a completely fair and reasonable, if you guys all would prefer to just leave it as is. I think the buyer just wants to ensure that, you know, in order for him to be as reasonable and fair and accommodating as possible to the current tenants, and not disrupt their ability to offer golf, and knowing that with weather the way it is, it might not be October, like that, we would just have grace with... Yep, I mean, obviously, his goal is going to be to get a shovel on the ground as soon as possible, um, and doesn't want to get in a situation where if there's not a shovel on the ground on, by October thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, that it's cause for us to go through termination process on this agreement. So, I think I've had the same thoughts as you, Mayor Fitzsim. I think you could leave these as they are, um, see how the weather plays out, see how the year plays out, but also to your point, the new, the buyer will have complete control over that property. Um, I mean, if you read through the lease agreement, as long as they're able to provide an avenue for them to offer golf, and then I think it's a short-order food is what it, and so it's like you could presumably have a trailer on site and still meet the requirements of the lease. Um, so, I think if you guys want to leave that be, I'll leave that to, up to you guys, but I, I hear completely what you're saying.
I, I didn't know if there's something material behind it. Obviously, we're bumping, the closing is delayed from where it was, but I haven't saw anything material that would change in that short span to say, hey, we've now got to bump this out another year and a half beyond where it was, and council, any thoughts? And again, we can come back to it, it's...
Yeah, this will come up as we go through, because that date change is probably one of the biggest changes on all the documents. So just mull on that a little bit. Um, I've, I think, as long as there's just a general flexibility, I think the buyer wants to just be completely, you know, open and honest that his goal is going to, going to be to redevelop there. If it's November first, and they're still able to golf, and um, doesn't want to impede on their ability to do that and be reasonable and fair to them, but to your point, that can be done without the current clubhouse as it is. And it could be a makeshift interim one, just to get them through the season. So, I think we've got some flexibility there. Um, and this is a document that you had not histor, had not seen in the previous decisions. It's a bill of sale. It essentially details out the personal property. And so we had initially tried to do an estoppel certificate, clunk-it agreement, mostly because the city's not party to that. That would be the, the buyer and the tenants. Um, and so this just details out, what is the personal property that's going with the sale, and what's personal property not going with the sale, just so that it's very clear when it does come to that termination date, who's responsible for what. There's going to be certain items that leave with the tenant, and then there's certain items that were purchased as a part of the sale. Not very many, but there are a few. So, that just spells this out. Um, it's a bill of sale, common document with, um, commercial closings. Assignment and assumption agreement, um, this is just assigning the current lease to Boulder Ridge. And then, a key item on this one that I, has changed since your last one, is that that termination fee would be paid to the buyer immediately to administer, so that kind of to your point, what you had, had said earlier, uh, Mayor Fitzsim, is that that forty thousand is to them, and for them to administer that termination in February of twenty twenty-five. Um, so as it sits today, that termination fee would just be paid outright, or taken off the closing, um, settlement cost, and the buyer would facilitate the termination. It would be exactly three hundred sixty-five days from whatever day we close on. Presumably, today, it's, as of today, closing is scheduled for tomorrow. Initially, um, both in May and in the September purchase agreement, it was proposed that that forty thousand dollars would be escrow. And so, this is getting away from the escrow concept and just, um, having it outright. Reason being is to remove the city from the middle of buyer and tenant discussions, and, and have that be solely resting on the buyer as their responsibility. So this will come up again, it's, this is both in the assignment and assumption agreement, and then also in the development agreement. So I don't know if you want to talk about it now, or if you want me to keep going. The development agreement is really the meat of this, and anything we change there would then get changed in these documents. Warantied is a, you know, standard property, closing a sale, and again, we move from meets and bounds to regular, um, updated legal description. So the development agreement, this is the, the biggest item tonight that does need formal approval. It was approved as a part of the purchase agreement as an exhibit, um, but we all knew that it would come back as a final approval to you as we got closer to closing, because there are multiple items that needed to still be worked out. So it was officially, the initial, um, development agreement, it was approved on October sixteenth as a part of the purchase agreement, or executed, I'm sorry, it was approved in September. Knowing that amendments would be coming, as a condition of the sale for the golf course, this was, this development agreement was very important to enter into by the council. It allowed us to put multiple restrictions and conditions on the property that do run with the land. So not with, um, the company itself, or organization, or buyer itself, but it runs with the land. It would transfer to any future property owners of the land. The development agreement has an exhibit, um, as I mentioned, was an exhibit to the purchase agreement. It was approved on May twenty-second, and then again on September twenty-fifth, and then actually officially executed on October sixteenth. There are minor items still needing to be worked out before final approval. This, again, that third bullet down discusses the adjustment to the dates. Um, so as I mentioned, if we change it here, we would change it in the purchase agreement. And then, the requirements to operate a golf course and maintain a golf course have been adjusted to acknowledge that if the buyer and tenant do not align, and construction timelines must get pushed back, that there'd be some grace. So this speaks to what you were talking about, Mayor Fitzsim, is that that's already essentially put in here, that there would be some grace there, um, of what that timeline is in order to be respectful to the tenants. And then again, as we match the other documents, the legal description is updated to match the plat and move away from meets and bounds. So, there's these five changes to the development agreement. Um, and then, the other really big substantive change is the escrow to the payout of that termination fee, which is forty thousand dollars due on the date of termination. I think I'll pause here, because this one, I, I think the, the development agreement is really the meat of this whole facilitation of this sale. It's where it holds all of our restrictions, where, it's where it holds all of our conditions on the property now and into the future thirty years, which is the maximum length of restriction. So, let's go through these bullet points, and then the termination fee, just to make sure we're all on the same page and have an understanding. We can talk about the dates a little bit more, too, that we had talked about with the purchase agreement.
Who wants to start?
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I, we can talk about maybe the escrow a little bit. I, um, I think I struggled a little bit in giving that money to the buyer upfront, for that not be used for your later, and um, I think with some indemnification and some of those things kind of written into an escrow agreement, and we have a draft one, that I would still prefer to see that be kind of controlled by a title company and then paid out, you know, kind of when it's, um, actually terminated. Would be my opinion.
I had a similar question, and just kind of the the transition of that and, and the logic of it, or what difference it makes ramifications long-term.
Yeah, so, the difference between the two, the escrow agreement, as Jed mentioned, goes, is basically managed by the title company, and it would not be released until that termination date, which would be February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. So, that was what we had originally set up and agreed to in the initial purchase agreements. Um, the concern from our city attorney was that, are we then in the middle of determining between the buyer and the tenant of how that forty thousand gets paid out, when it gets paid out, if there's things that offset from it, which is allowed under the lease? Um, however, he did provide, and you guys saw, it's not in your packets, but you saw in the email that, uh, an escrow agreement that could be something that we go back to, um, and how that would work and ramifications of that decision. Yes, the city is still party to it then, until February or, or whatever date we end up officially terminating on in twenty twenty-five. Um, however, you could clarify in the escrow agreement, the indemny clause to, clause to remove us out of um, any potential concerns that may be arising between the buyer and the tenant. Um, so that could be spelled out into it, and then you could also spell out, what exactly can that termination fee be used on? If those costs don't arise, it's returned to the city, and isn't then the property of the buyer. And so, what that then does is, um, provides just that protection for city council in the city of we know it's going to be used for termination and termination only. If something arises between now and then, um, that there would be a cost for default, that termination fee would not get enacted. You could offset from it if there were, um, damages or proven items that you could draw down from that, um, but it would be run by a title company. You would have to run it through a title company to draw down from it. It would not be up to us, and it would have to be, you know, proven costs by the buyer. So, um, you know, Jed and I talked about it earlier, of just kind of that, really that title company almost acts like a mediator of those funds, um, and so that it's not just a check tomorrow, um, but it's also not necessarily the sole responsibility of this city to facilitate it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
And I certainly, uh, I guess, coming in tonight, I, I was thinking it'd be clean to just cut it as presented to us. I think the more I hear you talk through it is, I'm more in favor of an escrow. Um, you know, really, the intent of that is, is an early buyout. Uh, the current operators put up two to three hundred thousand dollars of capital to get it to where it's at today, and that's part of the agreement that's in place, is to pay that back should we end it early. There's an opportunity that it doesn't end early, and that operator still is able to become whole through the life of the lease. Essentially, you know, returning tho, that money back to the city, should it not be canceled. So, I, I certainly feel like the escrow company, and I think to one of your points, can manage that for us. It doesn't keep the city or put the city in between, and it can be clean if done the way our city attorney presented it.
Yeah, and to that point, um, I had just connected with our city attorney before the meeting, just to talk about the escrow agreement that had been circulated, and since that was the original format we were, we were going off of, um, and just understanding from him, like, hey, can we, can, can we actually put in here that there'd be a requirement for mediation so that it even more so takes the city out? Um, but by putting the indemnity in there, that if there's any litigation that were to take place between the buyer and the tenant regarding this termination or lease, the city would be indemnified. That would be a decision being made by the buyer or the tenants. And as a part of indemnification, any litigation that takes place between them would require mediation. And so really, essentially, by putting that clause in there, not only in the, is the title company handling the processing of payments that are taking place, but then also um, any litigation that would take place, would remove the city from it, which is really what our ultimate goal was, Mayor Fitzsim, to your point of, do we just pay that forty thousand tomorrow so that the city is out of it? But I think, you know, I, responsibly, we want that to be used towards the buyout. That's the purpose of it. That always has been the purpose of it. Um, and ensuring that that is for the buyout, and not necessarily incentivizing anything on the buyer's end to terminate early, or, or to try to terminate early.
Council, any other thoughts on the escrow? Might be clean if we take them kind of in that...
One by one?
Yeah.
So if I'm hearing you all correctly, you'd prefer the escrow agreement with the indemnity clause in it, and, um, I think that makes sense, and then it would, it would be revising the documents to remove the forty thousand dollar, um, payout as a part of the settlement costs with closing tomorrow, and putting it into an escrow fund.
I think it's a cleaner way for us to ensure we're fulfilling our obligation to the tenant, even though we're, we're ending our contractual relationship. Um, I feel obligated to ensure there's some protection there, or a clean vehicle for all parties.
Okay. That makes sense. So let's go back and revisit the dates. Any thoughts on that as we've walked through these?
Council, my, my point in the dates is that the, the planned closing date has moved, and I don't have it exact in front of me, but I'll call it two months, three months, maybe? Give some liberty there. So it's moved three months. The proposal here is to move a year and a half, the timeline or requirement to start and finish a year and a half back from what it was when the purchase agreement was initially drafted. And so I'm coming from this from an angle of in the course of the three months that the closing has been delayed. It hasn't been uh on the ill will of one party or another. There's nothing material that has arisen out of it. Uh, I just don't see the reason to move the dates. I devil's advocate, I would say that in December of twenty twenty three, I was able to golf. And so in October of twenty twenty four, if happenstance they're able to golf, the lease agreement as it, as I've understood it today, as long as golf is open, the operator has full uh access to the grounds and facilities. Once golf season closes, then the owner has full access to the property. And so again, I'm looking at it from this angle saying, in more years than not, October thirty first is never a golf day, which would allow, continue to allow as right now would allow the new owner to do exactly what they plan to do should they have closed on this property in January versus closing on February thirteenth. I just don't see anything material that has changed. And one of the things that uh there was from the group that had excitement of this redevelopment was to see dirt moving and get redevelopment happening. And so I, I think about as it's presented here, that if we waited until June first of twenty twenty five to actually see dirt move, uh, there's gonna be, I I guess, more feedback from the community.
Just quick point of clarification, sorry, Tim. It's just seven months, right? Is my math bad?
What's that?
It's a seven month pushback.
From October to June?
Sorry.
Or October thirty first to June?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven month pushback and a one month pushback from the closing.
That's what I was gonna, yeah. Yeah, it was actually only a one month delay from clo- closing, presumably if we close tomorrow. So it's um not been a, it's a, you know, extensive delay by any means. I, I will preface this with, I'm not an attorney, and I also don't want to represent our city attorney as the attorney for the buyer or the tenants. Um, but in reading the lease, um, the landowner, the buyer, has full rights to that property as long as they provide the ability to offer nine hole golf course and short order food. Um, which frankly, the clubhouse right now, even this last year, they had a hard time operating full order food anyways because of the condition of some of the equipment. So I, I think food truck and, you know, some sort of an interim shed would be within the rights of the buyer. And the tenants can still operate. Again, I don't want to get in the middle of that, but I, to your point, Mayor Fitzsimmons, I think it is a completely reasonable ask of the buyer to be able to start construction on the property they own.
And I don't want to get in the middle of that either. Frankly, I, I would like to see the clubhouse remain, but at that point, we don't own it.
Yeah.
Um, I, again, reading the lease that's in place today, the operator has rights as a tenant to operate their business, right? And so um, that doesn't, that's not us. That's not between us and and the, the landowner at that point in time. All I'm, the angle I'm coming from is that we, as a council unanimously decided on that, and one of the factors was, uh, I'll say a rather compressed timeline to make sure that dirt's moving. And one month delay doesn't equal seven month delay in my mind, so.
Yeah, and and it also, you know, it just means that they have to start improvements. Certainly doesn't mean they have to be finished, and it certainly doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to be anything more than it, it just needs to show that, that we're making some progress.
Who initiated the change in the DA?
Um, this was a, that was a request from the buyer as we were progressing through and feeling like maybe there wouldn't be flexibility from the tenants to allow construction.
Um, I think that the October thirty first start construction gives you maybe a month of construction ability before, you know, in a typical year, you have a month of November to to move dirt and and do that. Um, more than likely, the cost of winter construction is not something that, you know, I foresee them pushing forward. There is quite a, a bit of elevated cost to construct during the winter. Um, and so in that last month of the year, there, there might be some dirt pushed and and some foundations uh potentially or parking lot improvements. Um, you're not going to get back in, you know, depending again on the weather, you know, anytime within the next till April or, you know, whenever the, this year being an exception, obviously. Um, so I, I get what their concern might be with the short, but again, I don't foresee the reason why they would need to change. I mean, you're still getting a full year of construction. Um, October twenty four to June twenty five. Um, I, yeah, no, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that they, their construction schedule that they have from their contractor was who dictated this change or, you know, I didn't know where that came from.
No, I can't confirm this, but I know they've been working really closely with a, a local contractor. And I, I don't think it's on the contractor's side. I think it was just out of concern that maybe they wouldn't be allowed to start construction. Um, but again, I'm not sure that the tenant has the, those rights under the, under a lease. Um, most tenants wouldn't. I mean, that's not, like, they, they have the rights to operate their business, but the landlord in, has the ability to make improvements and construct. So I think what I'm hearing is that we leave the dates as is. Is that accurate?
Excuse me, my thoughts were similar to Tim's, and it's just those, how much construction you get in um before the snow falls. But like you mentioned, it's a year long. I guess the only thing that I would throw out there is, okay, if we go back to March of twenty five, then you avoid the whole tenant thing altogether. Um, but if, if, if we know that it's not an issue, then I think the dates could remain the same.
I hear what everybody, I, I get what you're saying, uh, Mayor Fitzsimmons, in regards to some of the excitement around this and wanting to see projects starting, dirt moving, um, you know, six or seven months. I guess I'm, I'm probably walk the more flexible line on that. But um, and if it's in regards to the current tenant and and potential operational issues due to construction, I, I also understand that too. So I'm, those are my initial thoughts.
Yeah, and I would just jump in and say, I, I don't see the need to, to change it as much, but I'm also a little bit impartial. You have winter and some of those things. Um, I just think it, let's get it started, let's keep that sense of urgency. Uh, if we wanted to add some time on the backend, should he not finish in that timeframe? He's the one that would have the, the motivation to get it done because he's not making money until it's done. And so if there's something that wasn't done on the backend, to add some dates or times over the winter that have finished on the inside of work or the work that he's doing, I'd be comfortable extending it on the backend, uh, because they would have a motivation then versus, oh, I don't have to start till next summer, which I would love for it to get started uh in the original timeframe that we talked about. And then if it takes them a little bit longer due to weather, I'd be open to be flexible on the backend.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, I think that point's valid. We want, it's been expressed that we're making this sale so that a private entity can operate this and that we see the sustainability better in a private entity than a public entity. Like, that's been shared in most of these documents with us. If we're still golfing in October of twenty twenty four, uh, it's very reasonable that we should allow an extension so that we don't shut down the golf season. Like, we're requiring this to stay a nine hole, thirty six par course. Like, I don't think anyone up here wants to say, shut it down, you've got to start construction. But what you just said, the sentiment of, hey, let's, let's push this, let's get it going is, should be alive and well.
Yeah, and I'll point out the, the fourth bullet point here too. Like, one of the amendments to the development agreement from the initial one that was with the purchase agreement is that there is that flexibility if the buyer and tenant aren't aligning and having a hard time with construction timelines. Like, there's, obviously the council wants to see redevelopment there. The sooner that redevelopment happens, the sooner it's on our tax base, the sooner we're able to provide that new amenity. So there is some grace already built in there. Um, and so I think even that point alone gives us the ability to leave the dates as is, knowing that we just have to keep good lines of communication with the buyer. Um, it's that it has to start, it doesn't have to be finished. And so just show some activity there that things are moving. Um, and if we wanted to extend the timeline for completion, maybe that would make more sense than anything else. So leave as is? Extend end of it or leave as is and they can always come back? We'll make a vote.
Just for clarity, um, yeah, and I'm writing down all this so we can make a motion. But we say leave as is, leave as originally, October thirty first, twenty twenty four.
To June first, or no, no, I'm sorry, October thirty first of twenty twenty four.
So October thirty first of twenty twenty five is what it originally was.
October thirty first of twenty twenty four to June first of twenty twenty six.
No, that's only the winner.
It previously was October thirty first.
And we were moving it to, we were gonna move it to June first.
And then the backend, we're gonna move October thirty first to June first.
Yes, you're right.
So it'll just revert back to October thirty first on both years.
Correct, thank you. Sorry, I was reading that wrong.
And I, I would personally like to see us extend the backend, just, it, it's gonna be more apt to be a golf course for longer if they're not pushing construction, if they can plan around it, if they know he's got a couple of months once golf season's over to finish the building. Um, our, our community residents would get to use it a lot more during the summer months, just to give them a little, so he's not rushing to finish by the end of October thirty first. He's gonna have a motivation once it starts to get it done, but he also might have a, you know, competing interest with the golf course and the use of usability of that space.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind giving him a little bit of time on the backend to say, hey, if we delay that a month, we can golf for a month, and then we can get back to, to whatever the construction might be.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, it's a golf course. Um, winter months aren't conducive to activity. Um, I would say like even be comfortable on the backend to say March thirty first of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, which extends it through.
To the start of the next golf season.
Through non-golf season. There's chances in April that you could golf, right? But I, Jed, a point I picked up there was don't force it to be done by October and shut down more of the course if it can remain open and inactive.
That makes sense to me.
So counsel, again, we'll review this in a motion, but then consensus would be October thirty first, twenty twenty four with an end date of March thirty first, twenty twenty six. Seeing heads nod, okay.
Okay, so I'm just trying to go through and make sure I got all of our items. Um, I'm gonna jump back, let's just start at the beginning with the documents. So purchase agreement. We would adjust the closing date. Um, it has to be completed by March twelfth. Proper legal description, we are adjusting the dates from October thirty first, twenty twenty four to March thirty first of twenty twenty six. And then the easement, which is reflected in there. Bill of sale, no changes there. Assignment and assumption is that we are reverting back to the escrow agreement um, as drafted and to include the indemnity language. Okay. Warranted deed, updated legal description, otherwise no changes there. Development agreement basically encompasses what we just talked about, adjusting the dates, adjusting the legal description. Otherwise, all of those remain. Does that address everything in the development agreement, or were there other items in the development agreement?
Yeah, it's um, uh, another item in the development agreement um, regarding um, section ten, reinvesting title to the property to the city. Uh, this is in regards to default. Um, as you work through both of these instances, a, a couple of things that I, I would like to throw out. Um, we use the word um fair market value. So in the essence of default, we, we get the golf course back at cost or at no cost. Um, but then we have to assess fair market value, um, resell, and then um obviously split um the proceeds accordingly with mortgagee, all the costs for the city, uh, and then ultimately a, a lot of the improvements for the current buyer uh that they're there. Um, two things I'd like to see, um, one, I, I would love for us to explain and define fair market value a little bit different or a little bit more, just the ultimate goal, I think of this paragraph would be that we, in thirty years, that's a long time. No one's gonna remember what we're talking about here. Uh, just to go back to the sale and how we addressed the value of the property at the time of sale, uh, and looking at it as a conditional use property, um, you know, really looking at a lot of the improvements that needed to be made and, and some of the things that we looked at as it relates to evaluating that property. We didn't look at the property as a development property for new housing or any of those things. I just want to make sure a future council knows that, okay, this is how we evaluated it when we sold. This is the evaluation I came up with, we deducted major costs, and that's how we came up with the purchase price. I'd like to see that at least be considered in the future versus um two separate fair market values from um the way they may look at the use of the land uh being seen differently. Um, so I would love a little bit more documentation on fair market value would be my first point. And then the, the second thing I'd like to see is in um ten B. It basically says, um, we'll reimburse the developer at success or transfer the amount of equal, the sum of cash actually invested by the developer in acquiring the property. Um, you know, as we went through this approval process, we identified some major things. And we, we list that actually later in this document under section fifteen, where we talk about irrigation uh being a big issue that we discussed here, uh, the parking lot and then the clubhouse. Um, to me, those were already taken out of the purchase price evaluation. And so if this would go into default in year three, and the developer would have already put those things in, I don't want that to be counted as cash they put into uh the property, being that it was already subtracted from um, really the sales price that we, we agreed upon in the beginning. So just kind of cleaning that up a little bit so that we ensure that how we sold and evaluated the property is exactly how at, if a default happened, that we would then take the property back and be responsible of reimbursing um the developer for those things.
As it sits here today, if, if we were to go through with it and they default in year two after doing a million dollars in irrigation, we are responsible for repaying them a million dollars in irrigation. As I read through that. Is that interpretation you had, Jed?
Yeah, it just says any gains or income withdrawn uh are subtracted. So if the developer makes money, they have, that gets subtracted from that. But it, it says, um.
After our expenses are paid.
After our expenses are paid, the sum of cash actually invested by the developer in acquiring the property and making any of the improvements of the property um less the gains of income. So yes, they would get credit for the investments they're doing, which makes a lot of sense, right? If they're gonna put a multimillion or million dollar building, they, they should get the value. We don't need the value from that, of course. I'm just more concerned about, hey, when we did the sale, we did devalue um from my chair the, the appraisal a little bit based on the improvements. And because we did that, I think that's what was meant to pay for the irrigation and help kind of facilitate this. Uh, I wouldn't want to see in year three us having to pay for irrigation that was just put in, um, because I felt like we give that credit upfront.
Yep. So what I took a note of is, is two things, and, and Jed and I had the opportunity to, to chat about this right before. Um, and so I had the chance to connect with our city attorney, defining fair market values that it's consistent with the way that we sold the property. Um, so clarifying that. And then under section ten B, ensuring that we are removing section fifteen items from the credit that, that they receive as money put in. Um, and I think both those will help clarify just exactly how we're achieving that fair market value so that that credit isn't being achieved both on this end, but then also on the backend. Okay. Yeah, I think both of those are, are, make sense.
And so maybe diving in a little bit on fifteen there. Um, again, the way I have understood this document to read is that we're saying, item fifteen is the, this is not, declaring this is not a business subsidy because of the items listed. That's logical to me, but nowhere in here does it actually require that investment of those items. Uh, oh, it's maybe specifically the irrigation, right? And so.
The actual detailed.
Again, if we go back to. Again, if we go back to this process, it was positioned to us as. There is a significant financial liability to the irrigation, it's been recognized, there's a bid I reviewed again today, it was. Anywhere from five hundred, John crack me, five hundred thousand to a million dollars from MTI or a reputable contractor. Which. That being accurate. Makes number fifteen accurate, saying, hey, because there's a million dollars of cost, potentially a million dollars of cost, we're not classifying this as a subsidy. But we're also not re- actually requiring the irrigation to be. Updated, we're simply saying it has to be in working order, and I think that's been part of this challenge is. Is it in working order today or is it not, and how do we define that, who, who calls that? Um, and so if, if the irrigation update doesn't happen, then one could argue that. The subsidy is not, the subsidy definition is not accurate either.
So, there's a couple factors in the, in fifteen, it's, they have A, B, and C there, so. Parties agree that the sale is not substantially below fair market value and certainly not one hundred and fifty thousand before, below fair market value because the appraisal. Did not include privately owned equipment, or in- incorrectly included privately owned equipment, so that's, um, the personal property bill of sale items. Did not make necessary adjustments for parking lot and irrigation improvements, so that, um, is essentially backing those numbers off. From the appraisal to the four twenty six, but then also. The obligation of the redevelopment improvements. So it's not just the parking lot and irrigation, it would also be the redevelopment improvements of. Providing a new five thousand square foot clubhouse, which is in the beginning of the, of the. So. I, and if I recall correctly. The irrigation piece was a strategic decision by the council of saying, hey. Golf has to be provided. That irrigation system has a function in order for golf to be provided, but what we really wanna do is drive redevelopment, and so. Requiring a brand new overhaul system or whatever we wanna do with that irrigation. We'll leave that up to the buyer of how they're gonna facilitate that, what we wanna really make sure is that the parking lot, because we knew if the parking lot got. Removed, it likely would drive the clubhouse, and then that the clubhouse would take place. So those two items, I think, cover the difference in the appraisal value, am I following that? Oversimplifying it?
No, it, it, it makes sense to me, it. It comes up in my mind when we say, hey, ten years from now, twenty years from now, we're gonna back out these costs.
Do we have to put a number to them?
How do we know those costs, right, and so, I see a couple of these as, hey, the parking lot has to be, we're saying that. That, uh, the parking lot is at its end of useful life, it has to be redone. That, that's going to happen before March of, March thirty first, twenty twenty six, right, we're gonna be able to obtain that. There's some literature or some, um, documents in here that say they have to share said information with us, I just wonder if there's. The irrigation was such a big item for us, that we didn't wanna incur that future cost. Fifteen years from now, how are we gonna ask with that future cost, should we have to, and? Mechanism to. Capture that, because everything else in, in item fifteen is really gonna be covered in the first.
Couple.
Fifteen months.
So is it?
In regards to that, um. Will, if the irrigation system is not adequate or not running in fifteen years. Won't the golf course then reflect the disrepair in itself? And then in turn, start to push back on the, you know, our PGA standards or whatever we've put in, into the contract. At that point, there has to be some improvements made, and by just default of the course not being adequately watered. It's going to deteriorate, and then that would then trigger the check and balance, is that something that would?
I, I think that's, um, I think that's accurate as well. Kinda gets into, hey, how, what is that monitoring mechanism? If it's in a drought, it's one thing, if it's not, like, right, so it's just, I don't know, my mind's caught up in this, hey. We really wanted to move away because of that one big cost, other factors as well. So I don't know, I'll maybe simmer on that and think that through a little deeper.
I don't disagree with that, that, you know, ultimately, he's gonna have a vested interest to make sure there's irrigation up there, and I think in whichever way he can do that. I think quantifying it though, um, whether it just be somewhere somehow. In there, whether we force him to do it now or don't, or, you know, if he can make that one last for a period of time and it benefits him. That's fine, we know it's going to, uh, be, need to be replaced at some point, what I really worry about is more the short term, uh, default rate, so. You know, ultimately, fair market value, irrigation, uh, is still working, and so the fair market value is X and we're taking it back. Um, and then the day after we get it, we know it's still the old system that we, we sold for in the first place, and we have to replace it. We should have some sort of credit there, not, knowledge of the dollar amount that we discounted upfront, and therefore, if we ever get it back with the old system that we wanted replaced. That he was maybe able to make last for a couple of years, that we don't have to then immediately invest into an irrigation system would be my only thought, so.
I think that's logical, that, I, I mean, again, i- if they don't have to do anything to irrigation, I personally am great with that, that, that investment can happen elsewhere. But yeah, if we, uh, maybe, so maybe there's a drawdown, right, within fifteen, we can highlight somewhere. Or that, uh, market value, we can highlight. That we would subtract the cost of new irrigation minus anything that they've invested into in irrigation if.
Yeah, I just made a note, and I honestly, it, it probably will take our city attorneys. You know, he'll obviously watch us and hear where you guys' heads are at, I, I made a note of, under that ten B where we want language clarity on, on that buyback. That's really what we're talking about, it's not necessarily the subsidy, but it's under the buyback area that. We're gonna remove the section fifteen items, which are those items listed under the subsidy, but I think we need to go one layer up and say. Remove section fifteen items with values assigned. Like, there needs to be values assigned to it so that we're not using numbers today that we then. Are ending up buying back at a higher price than the number, you know, or lower price than the numbers that we're using today. And so, how he determines those values and gets to them, I think his legal mind will. Come into play there, but I, I get where you guys are going, there has to be a value assigned to that.
But I'd also like to see those same values represented.
In section fifteen.
In the subsidy, um, if, if we as a city are gonna say there's no subsidy, then we can put. We can put the cost in there, again, it's how we got to a market value. So, clarifying them in there probably eases.
Well, and if you put it, put it in bor- both spots and they're consistent, then it, I mean, the one refers to the other, so I think that makes sense.
Councils, are there consensus on that?
Any other development agreement items, I was just flipping through it while.
Were you gonna walk through the questions that?
Um, I'll let you guys, if you, if there's certain ones, I do have them printed off here, if you would like me to. Or if there's specific ones that you would like me to go through. You want me to just go down the list, is that easiest? Cause I'm happy to, I can. Some of them we've answered already, but.
Yeah, some we've answered, I'm trying to go through, I got your email at three eighteen.
I'll just go through them, cause I think some of them will be pretty quick. These are all questions, just for public transparency sake, these are all questions that, um, council members, when they received the documents in advance, I had just asked that. They sent over questions to me so that I could get, um, legal advice on each one of them, so that we were informed in making our decisions tonight, but. For transparency sake, I think it's good information for the public to hear the responses to them, so. Not only responses to them, but also the thorough review by the council members, I think that, that you guys have put a lot of time into this, I don't know that that is always. Um, equally represented, so, first question, does a development agreement run with the land, yes, that runs with the land. Um, number twenty in the development agreement is the rights to reentry, um, which we've talked about here of. You know, how do we subordinate to the financing institution, so, yes, the subordination agreement. Creates a scenario where the lender has limited priority over the city, um, so essentially. The city's ultimate rights in the right of reentry and ability to enforce the requirements of development agreement and covenants in the deeds, so they remain intact. I shortened that answer there, but. I think that all makes sense, um, the next question that was, a couple of questions by each of you was the escrow account. Why did we change from the escrow account to the payout, I think we've answered that, um. The fair market value question, um, under, and then the items that we discussed under section fifteen and ten B here, so I think we've got that. Can we add some language to ensure a net new restaurant to the community? So, this is an item that was initially discussed, and, and actually, if you go back to our, um, fax. Sheet on our website, it's actually one of the questions that's on there too, of, is this a net new restaurant, or is it just gonna be House of Pizza relocating to the golf course? And so, at that time, the buyer did confirm or did, um, agree that. It would not be House of Pizza Sartell, it will be a new entity and a new restaurant, and. In all of our agreements, it is a new entity under three Ts LLC and not House of Pizza. Now, since then, obviously, we are all aware of the unfortunate, um, disagreement between landlord and tenant at the Pinecone. Strip mall location, and that House of Pizza Sartell at that location is closing as they look for another location. Um, we have been confirmed that it's, it is not going to be at the golf course, um. Our hope is that it is still gonna be a net neutral restaurant, as initially discussed and assured when we moved through with the sale. The property that will remain at the Pinecone Marketplace, um, is still poised for a restaurant, and it is a tenant landlord situation, and so. Four points development will have to re-lease that back out. Whether it's to a restaurant is to be determined, um, but it is obviously set up for a restaurant, and so. We're working diligently as a staff to try to see what we can recruit in there to. Ensure that we are still able to do that net neutral, but they are two separate entities, and so I. We've gotten a lot of questions on that, and I think it is really important for us to publicly state that. Um, the buyer has publicly, you know, has stated to us as well individually and in an email format that. It's not the intent for the golf course to be House of Pizza, it never was the intent, um, unfortunate timing. We will still be working as a staff, uh, for that net neutral restaurant, but they are two separate entities, and we. Do not take a stance or get involved in civil matters on tenants and landlords, and so that's something that. Four points and House of Pizza Sartell has to work through, but we've, um, really tried hard to stay out of that. Questions on that, did I clarify it enough, do you think there's more that we need to share?
I agree with you that we don't, you know, obviously wanna get involved with any of that, and ultimately, this has nothing to do with House of Pizza, right? Because we're dealing with a different business entity, I do think though, you know, if you go back to the proposals and RFPs that we looked at and, and heard. Multiple people present on, that that was part of the proposal, of this is not going to be. That root, that moved here, and, um, obviously, we know that different things have changed in some of those things, and we, we would never be able to control a net new restaurant, even if this hadn't happened, right? Cause any restaurant can close at any time, right, so, um, I think it's more of like, hey, can we. Control the property that we are saying of, like, hey, can it follow the, uh, original intent of the proposal and all the. Conversations that we've had thus far by saying, hey, you know, you know, let's, can we, is there anything we can do as it relates to the development agreement, saying, hey, that. That business can't move there, I, I don't know even like saying that out loud, cause I don't like to restrict businesses, but. Um, I just want the original intent, I know we're all verbally saying that, but I also know when things are written down, it usually means that they get followed, so. Uh, I wouldn't know how to do that, but, uh, I do wanna make sure, I think you captured it well, but. Um, I, I, my hope is, is that the outcome of this is what, um, you know, we, what we've heard along the way over the last, you know, thirteen months, so.
Any other further questions, so, um. Our, our city attorney's response, specific to Jed's point of, you know, could we add that additional layer of. This cannot be House of Pizza for the first five years of this thirty year agreement or something of the sort. We could, it would be, it would need to be agreed upon by the buyer. And I'm just, I'm gonna read his, his full statement here, just cause I think it, it's important, um. If there, if the buyer agrees, we can certainly do that, however, this is not. Part of the current deal terms and will likely be a material change that the city cannot do unilaterally. Coming up with, with practical ways to restrict this will be difficult, you could restrict the name House of Pizza or the menu. But then, that may not actually limit the operation in the desired way, and I think what he's getting at there when he says. It's a material change that the city cannot do unilaterally, is that, um, it wasn't a part of the original purchase agreement. And adding this would, of course, need to be agreed upon by the buyer, but it also could be reason enough for the buyer to. Um, discontinue moving forward with the sale and be refunded on their escrow funds. Cause it is a substant- it's a big enough material change from what we initially negotiated.
I don't like the sounds of that either, uh, the sounds of restricting, and I would agree with. Council member Elmas, that it feels like an overreach. During the proposal, this particular proposal, the images we saw had. That business entity's name on the design of the building, and we specifically asked. Is this a move, or is this a net new restaurant? And the answer we got. Without hesitation, was this is a net new restaurant, something Sartell doesn't have today. And that's a little paraphrasing, but I would say it's almost exact. As council members, there's fellow council members here that were excited, and. One of the reasons we should vote for it was that it's a net new restaurant, and to me, that's logical, um. I don't know how to word that in a development agreement. But I would want the intent to carry forward. And I, I don't know how to do that, um, but I think as council, we need to, we need to determine. What do we want the intent to be, and then work, leverage our, our staff and legal team to hopefully come up to a solution. Are there other thoughts on that?
Uh, excuse me, um, I'm kinda on the same lines as Tim, um. In a perfect world, House Pizza's open there, we have a new restaurant here, um, my, how I saw the concept plans, which we all know. Concept plans obviously change, um, is just a restaurant, how I understood it from the buyer is his intent was. Not that House of Pizza. Could that change now, yeah, it could change, um, I think it could still be successful under the same name, House Pizza. I think it'd be great to have a different name, um, but I, I don't think it's. Something that we can stipulate at this point, um, and put that kind of restriction on.
And I would tend to agree as well, um, I feel like it's a bit of an overreach to try to control that, I think. Um, it's been my understanding that that's the intent all along, that it would be a separate entity. And. It, it, I wouldn't want the city dictating how I run my business in that regard. And so I think, um, nor would probably any business in, in the community, so I, I struggle with that.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to say too, I, I struggle with that as well, from the perspective of. Not wanting to control the business, I really was more trying to make the point of, like, how does the intent carry through, kinda like Ryan said. I do think we had a lot of discussion with our, you know, the proposals were received by us of. That being a positive, and then as the process moved forward, and we discussed and debated up here at the dais, that was. One of the biggest points was the net new restaurant, and, and some of the tax bases, some of the things that it was adding to our community, and so. To have it become an existing restaurant with, you know, potentially within a short period of time, I think our community would not. Um, think that we achieve what we are trying to accomplish, and I was just trying to see if there's any way that we could get language in there that would. Higher the probability of the original intent, uh, versus just, you know, we have the commitment, the, the owner has said, I believe. That their plan is still not to move it there, and that's what's, uh, I think it's been said, I think I read that the other day, so. Um, that's a good thing, um, and that's what we want, so, I just, if we could get something in the development agreement that would. State that, I would be comfortable with that.
I'm hearing two in favor of that and three not, so. We'll move on to the next.
Keep moving on, I just, I will, I do think that there. I just, I will, I do think that there's a ton of importance and just the transparency piece to have this conversation at the dais. I think this is recorded, something you can go back and reflect on in hindsight. And I, I've not had this conversation with the buyer, but in hindsight, both myself and our staff and the buyer, like I guaranteeing or promising a net neutral is not something that you could, you just never know when things might change. And in so, in hindsight, I think we wish we wouldn't have because I think those things change. And we're excited about the potential and the amenity that this will bring to Pine Ridge Golf Course, but it, and we're still hopeful for a net neutral and that Four Points will lease out to a new restaurant and it still is net neutral. But I think, you know, looking back on that, it's something that was out of our control from the very beginning. And that's, I, I think it's important for us to just acknowledge that publicly because I think that's really what the public wants to hear, is that we're going to still work towards that, but difficult to make it a part of this document at this point. Next question was, just explaining the process a little bit further. I have a slide on that, so I'm going to, we'll wrap up with that. Next question was, when is the money due to Boulder Ridge for early lease termination? So that will be at the termination date, February twenty twenty five. And we talked about the escrow as it relates to that. There was a que, question around the shift in improvement start and end dates. So we talked about that. Can we add language to protect the city from any claims, damages, lawsuits? And we talked about that as an indemnity language in the escrow account. And then another question about the fair market value scenario, which we discussed in section ten and section fifteen of the development agreement. So I think that was all of the questions. Did I cover them all? Okay.
Yeah, from what I'm seeing, we covered all the questions there.
And then I, let me just, so to talk about the process and next steps. And so closing is scheduled for tomorrow. I think given, I've documented down here the different changes. I think I'll go through each document on its own and get a motion and second on each one, just so that I've got clear direction here. The notice of lease termination will happen. That lease would terminate then February thirteenth of twenty twenty five, assuming we actually close tomorrow. Otherwise, it would be one year from the date of closing. The lease will be, per the assignment agreement, will be assigned to Three Ts LLC as the land owner. Tenants will remain Boulder Ridge until the lease termination date, February twenty twenty five. Ownership and operations is fully transferred to Three Ts. They will then administer the lease until that lease expires. And then construction, actually, that would be, construction must begin by October thirty first of twenty twenty four. Now with our, with what we're, we're leaving those dates as is.
Extending the backend, right?
Extending the backend. It just has to begin by that date. And so those are the next steps of what would happen. There was, in the council member, there were, council memo, there was a statement that, you know, this has already been approved and if we don't approve it tonight, it'll revert back to the original documents. So you do have, you do have until, we, we just have to close by March twelfth. And so if, if we feel like we need more edits, I, I mean, I think we're in a comfortable spot and I can articulate this all, but we would have until March twelfth to close. And so closing is intended to happen tomorrow, but if items were needing to be brought back, we'd have two more meetings between now and March twelfth. We just have to close by March twelfth. And I did see, I thought Adam answered that question a little bit.
Yeah, he did. Mentioned that if we didn't approve this tonight and didn't take further action between now and March twelfth, it would revert back to the original purchase agreement.
Okay, so that was what the.
Fallout the need for a development agreement. So that seems like it's just going to be.
Kind of goes in, yeah.
Anna, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I thought our, the action that carried was to approve the sale, but that the cancellation would come one day following closing. Because what we're actually doing here is selling property with a, we're selling a leased property. And so the buyer, as part of the subsidy and restrictions, is taking on a lease as stated. And so the.
Termination actually happens after.
Termination actually comes from the new buyer after they close because they now are the holder of that lease.
And then the funds are in escrow.
The funds are in escrow. It takes the city completely out of it so that we wouldn't cancel something and not close or cancel something and the new buyer doesn't actually want it canceled. He may want, that new buyer may want to continue the lease for its entirety. But it gives them that ownership to make that decision.
No, I think you're spot on on that. After you said that, I was thinking that through and also it makes sense because we don't have a notice of cancellation in any of our information here. Because we determined that that notice is not going to be on us.
From the city. That is, we're selling the property.
The funds will be there for escrow. Yes, sorry, I misstated that.
So lease termination will happen.
After closing.
We actually can just take out lease termination from all of our discussion because that is an action that future buyer may or may not take. Counselor, we understanding that, correct, together, okay?
Okay, so I'm going to go back and go through each document and I want to make sure I get a motion and second on each document and then I want to make sure that I'm articulating the changes accurately. So for the purchase agreement, we adjusted the closing date. We adjusted the proper legal description. We are putting the dates as October thirty first, twenty twenty four through March thirty first of twenty twenty six. And we are including the drainage and utility easements in the amendment. Did I get them all?
Counselors, are a motion on the purchase agreement?
With those amendments.
With those updated amendments? We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the amended purchase agreement? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Okay, the bill of sale, this did not have any changes.
Counselors, are a motion to approve the bill of sale as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill of sale as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Okay, assignment agreement. Under this one, it's assigning the lease to, of, from, that the city has with Boulder Ridge to Three Ts and that we're, we are amending this as presented to be at an escrow agreement with an indemnity clause. Which is the original, what we had originally done and then plus the indemnity clause.
Is there a motion for that? Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Is there any additional clarity needed for what that escrow means?
I just have one extra question. As we talked about the potential of the new buyer not executing that and the money sitting escrow, is there a timeframe on the back end of that? Or would it sit there for?
Well, it would, it would, maybe we should clarify that to ride out the life of the lease and we've got the lease in front of us here somewhere. Every year it goes down ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. There is a, it's, every year is ten thousand dollars, so it's forty thousand dollars in total. They rem, the funds will remain in escrow if they can't agree to things, remain in escrow for four hundred days after the closing date. So essentially, they get to their termination date, there's a little bit of a grace period. Otherwise, it's released back to the city.
And so all funds released back, I mean, okay, so we've got that drawn up.
Yep, that's in there. Yep.
Does that satisfy your question? Any other questions on the escrow? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Warranty deed?
Warranty deed. Updating this with the changes of October thirty first, twenty twenty four to March thirty first, twenty twenty six. Is that in the warranty deed? Let me just verify quick.
We could also make a blank motion that would update the dates.
Yeah. All we're doing with this is, is, we are updating it with those dates and then the dates of, the date of closing. So just, I'll update it with the appropriate dates for both of those to match the purchase agreement and development agreement and closing date.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the warranty deed with the change in dates if necessary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
That's good.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Okay, last document is a development agreement. I have changing the dates to October thirty first, twenty twenty four to March thirty first, twenty twenty six to match the other documents. Revising section ten to have language clarity where we define the fair market value to be consistent in the way that we sold the property. And then also in ten B, we would remove the section fifteen items and include values. And then that section fifteen items under the subsidy section would also have values. So we can take that as a motion with all of those amendments collectively, and I'll spell them out in a minute.
And I've got a couple more questions that weren't on here.
Oh, sure.
If we could walk through those quick and I don't know if others do, but just, it's the first two pages. First is item B. I like how it's spelled out that the last element there is, the intent is to keep undeveloped green space. Item C then goes into talking about re, permitted to redevelop any portion of the property not used for golf course. I think our intent there is that saying, hey, you could redevelop the clubhouse. But they obviously could remove or shorten one hole and have significant frontage along Pinecone as redevelopment. Again, if our intent is to have this green space be maintained, I don't know if rewording C is better or if we strike C. I mean, we're giving them the ability to redevelop in that commercial area already. I just, again, want to bring clarity for future councils and make sure the community.
What number was that again, Ryan?
Uh, that was the end of B and then it kind of goes into C.
I'm trying to find exactly where it is in the development agreement, where it spells out.
Front page.
No, but I, we, there's a section here where it goes into further depth on that and I am trying to figure out exactly where that is.
So item six, which is the bottom of second page, which is prohibition on development.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. So this, this actually came up as we were going between the, the September to now purchase agreement. Any of the frontage property, really frankly, any of the property, if it ever wants to be developed, but let's just talk about the frontage property on Pinecone. Because Pinecone, because I think that's the easiest for people to wrap their heads around being that it's Pinecone frontage. And if you would move some holes around, you would have property there to redevelop. If it is consistent with the use of a golf course, so let's say it's a expansion to the clubhouse, like you have to move the hole and it can be justified on that same parcel, as long as it's consistent with the use of a golf course or recreational amenity, that development obviously would have to be permitted and run through the development department, but that could be, that could take place. If it's any development that is not consistent with the use of the current business on that parcel, it is all one parcel and the release of covenants is required on the, on the full parcel. And so if there's any development that is desired for even a small portion of it, five acres here, three hundred feet here, you name it, and it's not consistent with the current use of the parcel, we don't allow in our code, different businesses on one parcel. It would require, and it's detailed out in here, even a partial release would require unanimous council approval to release covenants of even that partial portion. So if it's not consistent, it would have to come back.
Yep, and I think we've got coverage there and I, again, wanted to spell that out. I know we've all gotten questions on that.
Yep.
One of the questions was, hey, if fifty one percent of the eighty one acres is golf, does the other forty nine get to be redeveloped? And the answer we're hearing is no, that it needs to be consistent. It's one parcel.
And it would actually need to be split into different parcels and replatted, which would drive additional development fees and.
Yeah, which would bring us to the improvements, section two on the second page, which, where we state, any change to the improvements that reduces the size or scope of the improvements is required by the city council and unanimously approved?
So this is in reference to the actual like development improvements and not covenant.
Do we know if, if our legal weighed in on the unanimous part? I know that was questioned.
Yes, I remember that after we actually had approved the agreement, that you can put that in it, and it is in here that we would require unanimous, it could be challenged.
Okay.
But I still think, and I think we actually talked about it at that September meeting too, that I still think it's good for us to document in here the spirit of it. And then also knowing that this release of even a partial part would require it.
All right, last question I have is, under that improvement, section one, second page, we talked about a five thousand square foot commercial space.
Yep.
Is that, and again, not to be too nitty gritty, but is that enclosed space? Does that include a twenty five hundred square foot patio? I would think Rob would view the tax as being a lot different. Should it be five thousand enclosed versus twenty five hundred and twenty five hundred?
Um, so the way I read it, five thousand square feet of commercial space to include the restaurant, clubhouse, as well as a new parking lot for the property. And so those are the two items that could be included in the five thousand square feet.
We're saying the parking lot is part of the five thousand square feet?
It says.
There's no way that.
Oh, no. It's, they're being listed as separately. It's an and.
Okay.
Sorry.
So they can just bring a food truck.
Throw that wrench in at the ninth hour.
Yeah, five thousand square feet of.
Five thousand square feet of commercial space to include a clubhouse and a new parking lot for the property.
And again, my mind goes to what's there isn't five thousand today. I mean, I don't have the measurements, but probably fair to say. So again, we're looking for a, through here, it's an expanded, more offerings, larger space. Five thousand does not include the patio, right? Like.
Correct. It'd be, it's the clubhouse, it's the restaurant, yeah.
Counsel, any other questions on development agreement that we didn't cover? Okay. Sorry, Anna, I'll turn it back to you to walk us through those quick amendments.
Yeah, so let's just, in the motion, the motion would be to approve the development agreement with the amendments of adjusting the dates to October thirty first, twenty twenty four to March thirty first, twenty twenty six. Section ten language being clarified to define fair market value to be consistent to the current sale and to remove section fifteen items with values and then to amend section fifteen to have items that include values. I think I captured them all.
Counsel, are there any that we missed? Again, I'd say notably, we're keeping the net business as an intent, not as part of the legal documents. Uh, is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve that stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
Counsel, on to department reports. We have police.
Mayor members of the council, you have my report. Take any questions from that if you have them. I did want to highlight a couple of things that were easier to talk about than put into the report. If you remember back, all the way back to my interviews with the city, one of the deficiencies or updates.
All the way back, that was a year ago.
I know, it's like super long ago. One of the deficiencies or shortcomings I, I'd saw was the fact that we only had two patrol sergeants for the number of staff we has, the size of our city. So we're in the process of updating that and hopefully getting some new sergeants promoted using the new position we got this year and some of the public safety funding. I think that's particularly important with the two new hires that started today, two more that I only have a year on, they're all going to be night staff alone out there. So the guidance, mentorship of having those sergeants. Uh, two more that I only have a year on, they're all going to be night staff alone out there. So the guidance, mentorship of having those sergeants in place, I think will be really beneficial for uh, liability purposes and just our staff growth and potential. Um, secondly, with staffing and preliminary results, uh, so we were trying to figure out especially working with Anna and Rob on KPIs, what does that mean for PD and go outside of just population or crime rates and different things that can be manipulated? And what I decided to look at was uh, similar sized cities in Minnesota. These are cops that do our job, they're licensed under the same uh, agencies we are, so they, that have the potential to be the most similar, similar, excuse me, as our city. And eighteen cities in Minnesota have PDs ranging from sixteen thousand population to twenty two thousand. And, and pulling the data, and this is just preliminary, we don't have their, uh, authorized strength yet, but the officers they have on staff, uh, eighteen cities in that range, which puts us stead in the middle, and we were the lowest staffed out of all of them. Wasn't overly surprised by that, just from my experience and just seeing where numbers typically lie. Um. The average staff for that range of city in the state of Minnesota is thirty officers. We're currently sitting at twenty four. Uh, so we're pretty below average too. We do have a really low crime rate here, as most of us know in Sartell, so as we look to grow, uh, into those numbers, just I'll have some really solid data in the next month or two on authorized strength, which actually might push that number up a little bit, but just wanted to share kind of some of the findings of that stuff.
A- and just to confirm, when you're talking about those numbers or comparing us, you're comparing uh, authorized numbers or authorized force or hired force?
Current force. So that's why we think most of these agencies are short staffed.
Right.
As most of Minnesota is, some of them are significantly. So we actually think that average will be closer to thirty two when I get the final data, so.
Counsel, any questions for PD? Thank you. Fire.
Mayor, members of council in front of you, you have a monthly report for fire. Couple of things to note as well, um, one of the things council was asking for the last couple of years is updated dashboards. Um, not only in January, do you see a new look for our month's report, but we've been able to integrate our new dashboard in that brings everything from training to um, call volume to all the runs. And we're, we're gonna slowly start planning on some of that data to bring that in here. Um, we continue to make changes in the way we report that to get more accurate data. So that council, our future, future council will be able to make decisions off of that. Um, the other thing, really happy to report, uh, Fire Inspector Imholt was hired last month, obviously, and, uh, has gotten right to work. We're really happy with, uh, the level he was at. We were hoping he was had a minimum competency to be able to pick up some pieces with the Fire Marshal leaving. Um, he's doing an amazing job, really been able to step into that role, so. Um, any questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions for fire? Thank you. Engineering Public Works.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. You have our report. We're happy to be answering any questions that you have.
Any questions for April?
Aka, aka, aka.
Uh, be remiss if we didn't, uh, recognize item, uh, six I tonight, so, uh, excited for the future direction, uh, that department's headed. Um, city commission updates.
None at this time.
City council committee updates, Tim.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Alex? Judd?
Um, other than Pete, I liked your new dashboards. I did notice those and I thought they were nice, so good job. Uh, nothing else tonight.
Uh, couple highlights, uh, two members of council attended the APO recent workshop. Um, so I know that's been reported on and, and it's out there on the what is that called? Belt line. Belt line, you know, around the, uh, secluded area. A couple of us attended a area cities meeting. Uh, talked about legislative session upcoming and what might, uh, we expect there. It certainly sounds like there'll be a lack of spending, uh, at least from cash reserves, but, uh, likely some bonding. Bills coming forward, uh, session started today, so hold on tight. Um. And then one other item, uh, of note, our March, second meeting in March, and I was gonna try and pull up the calendar on the date. I know we had that as a topic. Are we planning to host that? Will we have a quorum? I know I will be absent. Uh, and will there be business, I guess?
Um, I don't know that we've gotten that far in planning that agenda yet. West Side, we're doing end of February, correct? So it is posted for, but we'll leave it up to you all if you-
It's March twenty fifth.
Tim will be there.
Okay.
I'm planning to be here.
Sounds like we'll have a quorum.
And it sounds like Tim will be the acting mayor.
Yes. Uh, that is all I have. Uh, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.